Welcome everyone to the March 8th City Council Work Session. Welcome everyone here and at home. And before I actually move to close this and open the Urban Renewal Agency meeting, I did want to remind people that the Rail Summit is tomorrow at LCC. I'm hoping many of you will be able to attend. It's a big, important juncture in our work on rails for this, for the Northwest Quarter. So with that, I am going to adjourn the council meeting and open a meeting of the Eugene Urban Renewal Agency. And our topic for this evening is something we've been working on for a while. That's downtown financing strategy. City Manager?
Thank you Mayor. And I'll start off with just a little bit of a recap of where we've been and a little bit of an overview. Then I'll turn it over to Sue for much more of the detail and then I'll wrap it up at the end. Remember tonight is really what we're asking you to do is to initiate the process for reviewing changes to the Downtown Urban Renewal District. Tonight's decision is not a binding decision, but what we want, or hoping to do is initiate the process as we go forward. And so we'll talk a little bit more about that. Just as a quick reminder, maybe we can get the lights, please. Well, we are talking about financing and tools specifically tonight, and it generates a lot of energy. Remember what we're really trying to do is foster vibrant downtown and boost our local economy, create jobs. And we've been talking for several months, many months, about a multi-pronged approach to that. And really have gone through some strategies and have talked about specific projects to try to accomplish that. Last time, we talked about some specific recommendations on some of these projects, and we're moving forward on some things. BEAM, for example, is underway. The green infrastructure, we talked about pursuing additional grants. But where we are tonight, and then parking, we'll be coming back to as a separate item for you. But tonight, we want to talk about really one way to fund some projects around urban renewal, specifically in the urban renewal district. So I'll turn it over to Sue and let you kind of walk us through.
Certainly. This slide is a summary of what you asked us to do at your last meeting. You said you wanted to fund four projects: LCC, the VA clinic, farmer's market, and downtown safety. And you said you wanted to look at four different funding options: use existing resources, use a geo bond, use a local option levy, or use downtown urban renewal to pay for the projects. There are many different ways you could put together funding packages using all of those projects and funding options. We've provided you with 90 pages of how we put together four funding options. Those 90 pages are out on the Vibrant Eugene website if anybody wants to take a look at them. I'm going to go through very briefly some of those, the highlights of that material. So these are the projects and what they would cost. Two things I particularly wanted to point out about this slide. One is that in every one of the cases, we would have to borrow money in order to pay for some of the projects. And so interest on that debt is included in the project costs, and that amount varies. And that's really the significant difference between the total cost of the various funding packages that we're going to show you. The second thing I wanted to point out is this, the last line that says legal debt issuance and admin. Basically, we, as I said, we would have to issue debt for these scenarios. Costs about $150,000 to do that, various fees and that sort of thing. We also have to take into account writing legal agreements to protect the city and make sure that we get what we want to get when we enter into a project with other entities. And then we also have some staff efforts that need to go into making all of this happen. We would, we've built into our projections the current level of staffing until the projects are complete. So we expect that through FY13, we'll be working at our current 1.4 FTE, which costs $150,000 a year. And then we would anticipate dropping the staffing down to .14 FTE, which would take care of things like preparing the budget and the audit and making debt payments and so on. Okay, so using the direction that we got from you, we put together funding packages that include these different kinds of funding. General Fund revenue is included in three of the four funding packages. If the urban renewal district stops collecting tax revenue, then the general fund would receive some one-time funds, as well as some new ongoing revenue. And I'll talk about both of those more in a minute. In order to fund all of the projects, you might also need to reallocate some general fund services. You could ask voters to approve a general obligation bond or a local option levy. In terms of the downtown district, there are two other kinds of funds. One would be looking at the downtown revitalization loan program. If you decided to stop that program, you could use those funds to contribute towards these projects. Or you could continue to use urban renewal in order to pay for these projects. Move? Ah, okay. So on page 32 of your packet, I set out exactly how we would estimate the amount of funds that might be available on a one-time basis if tax increment collections were stopped. The estimated amount that would be returned to the overlapping taxing districts is $3.3 million. This chart shows you how that $3.3 million would be distributed based on information from the tax assessor. You can see that the city of Eugene would get about $1.5 million. 4J, oh, sorry, city would get $1.5 million. 4J would get about $1 million. We are checking with the state to see whether that would really be more revenue to 4J, or if it would be an offset to some of the state funds in the state school funding formula. And we don't know the answer yet, but when we know, we will let you know. And then there would also be some one-time dollars that could go into the bond funds to reduce the amount needed to be collected from taxpayers for those items. If the downtown district were no longer collecting revenues, this chart shows the impacts on the various taxing districts. You'll note the city would get a little over $800,000 a year ongoing into the general fund. In terms of bond taxes, there'd be a slight decrease in the amount paid by taxpayers as a result of no more tax increment collections. We're working with the tax assessor to refine these very complicated calculations, but our initial estimate is that the tax bill would go down by about $1.66 a year for an average taxpayer. For the schools, we estimate that our local schools would receive $31,000 from that reallocation. Other schools throughout the state would receive $629,000. So there'd be $650,000 of additional property tax revenues that would go to schools. Most of it would not stay with our local schools. This takes into account the state school funding formula, but it doesn't take into account any impacts from Measure 5 on 4J's local option levy. So, in general, when urban renewal revenue collections are stopped, there's no significant change in the total tax bill, but the amounts that go to each item on the tax bill shift around a bit. If a property isn't at the Measure 5 limit for schools, however, the picture looks a little bit different. The tax assessor provided an example of one actual property in South Eugene so that we could test and see what would actually happen in the case where a property was at their Measure 5 limit for school taxes. For that one property, the reduction in the 4J local option levy was about 6% of the total local option levy taxes that that property would pay to 4J. That's an actual loss to 4J of revenues because those local option levy revenues are outside of the school funding formula. The overall impact of any loss on 4J's levy isn't known at this time because you have to do that same calculation on tens of thousands of tax, individual tax bills. But we do know that this loss would likely make the $20,000 gain for 4J that we were anticipating be smaller, or could even reduce 4J's revenues from below where they are now with urban renewal. So I'm going to talk about each of the four funding packages. This first one is using existing resources. And the basis here is that we would no longer collect tax increment funds. If that were to happen, the city would get one-time funds of about $2.4 million. That's the $1.5 million plus the amount we have remaining in our urban renewal cap. We would also start receiving about $800,000 a year in new general fund taxes. We would discontinue the loan program, and that would get about $1.9 million. And in this particular case, in order to fund all of the projects that you said you wanted to fund, we would have to reprogram about $450,000 of general fund services each year. Because we would need a significant amount of money upfront to pay for the LCC project, we would also need to borrow money. In this case, we would borrow $7 million over 20 years and pay that back from the new general fund revenues that we would receive from stopping the tax increment financing. The total cost for this scenario is $24.7 million, and that includes $5.2 million of interest on bonds. Next is the geo bond scenario. Again, we would stop collecting tax increment funds in the downtown district, and we would have those same effects: one-time dollars of $2.4 million, $800,000 of ongoing revenues in the general fund. And we would also ask voters in the city of Eugene to pay for geo bonds for the LCC project, $8.2 million. We would also, in addition to that, need to borrow some money to pay for the other projects. And we would have a bond of $1.2 million that would be paid from those new general fund revenues over 20 years. And the total cost of this scenario is $25.5 million with interest on those bonds of $5.9 million. The third scenario is using a local option levy to pay for officers. So again, we would have that $2.4 million of one-time dollars, ongoing $800,000. We would ask voters for a local option levy of $5.7 million. And we would need to borrow $9.5 million in order to fund all of the capital projects. We would repay the borrowing over 20 years, and the total cost for this package is $26.5 million with $7 million of interest. The fourth scenario is to, is different from those previous three options because we would continue to use the downtown urban renewal district in order to pay for these projects. Instead of returning those dollars to the overlapping taxing districts, we would retain those dollars and use them to fund projects. So we estimate that there will be about $4.1 million in the urban renewal funds that we could use from our existing fund balances. We would have ongoing tax increment dollars of about $1.7 million per year. We would borrow $7.7 million and repay that from urban renewal revenues over nine years, which is significantly less than the 20 years we would repay debt under the other three scenarios. The total cost for this particular funding strategy is $21.7 million with interest on those new bonds of $2.2 million. Talking a little bit more about what we would need to do to accomplish the downtown urban renewal scenario, we would have to make some amendments to the urban renewal plan. Two amendments would be required in order to go forward with these projects. You'd have to increase the cumulative spending limit. You would have to expand the boundary to include the VA clinic. And the city manager has also recommended a few other things. The draft plan in front of you has been written to allow only these four projects, plus project administration. An annual review of the spending would be done by citizens to ensure the funds are spent on these projects. And the district would be terminated when the projects are complete and the debt has been repaid, which we estimate would be FY 2019. And one more thing before I turn it back over to John is to just talk about what we're asking you to do tonight. We're asking you to initiate the process, as John said. And here's what would happen. You would initiate today. We would send the draft urban renewal plan and the report that accompanies the plan to the overlapping taxing districts for their review next, on March 12. The Planning Commission would review the plan, the urban renewal plan and the report on March 29. You would hold a public hearing on April 19. You would have a work session to review the comments that you received up till that point. And then you would be scheduled for a final decision on May 24. So now I'm going to turn it back to John, who's going to summarize and give you his recommendation.
Just a couple of things to kind of summarize the four options. There are several things that are in common with all the options that we presented. They fund all the recommended projects. Those are those four projects. They all create new jobs, any of those options that you choose. They all will improve the image of downtown and the community because they're creating, or we're funding those four projects. None of those projects subsidize private developers. And as Sue mentioned, the average annual admin legal debt is $150,000 per year on all of the various options. And it buys new technology. Help. Oh, not that much help here. Let's see.
Previous.
Now, there's...
I don't know, let's try that. There we go. That one? Was that the next one?
The next one?
I believe it was. Yes. Oops. Okay.
So here's just a little bit of recap what Sue talked about. That total cost for each of the four elements that she went through. You can see as you're moving across, the most expensive is the levy, the least is the downtown urban renewal. Part of that has to do with the issuance costs and the interest that is paid throughout the life of the bonds. Sue mentioned the bonds would need to be issued on all four of these. They're just structured differently based on what the need is. And if you take a look at the change in taxes per year, if we use existing resources, it's plus or minus $1.66, reduction in property tax. For the geo bond and the levy, you can see there. And then for the downtown urban renewal, there's no impact at all on taxes. With respect to our current programs, using existing resources would eliminate the downtown economic development loan program that we currently use to help businesses and projects move forward through the, that program. The remaining three options continue that program as we go forward. With respect to general fund, Sue mentioned the one-time funds that are available for the downtown projects on the first three are the 2.4. The urban renewal district is the 4.1, and that's really because the money is staying within the urban renewal and not being distributed back out to the various taxing districts. And it's also able, the cap amount that's still available in the cap. For ongoing funds to the general fund, the, under the first three options, there's $810,000 per year that in our scenarios would be going to pay for these projects, so they wouldn't be available for other services outside of these projects unless the council, of course, chose to do that. But in the scenarios we've presented that fund all four of those projects, those would go back into the projects. And then on the downtown urban renewal piece of that, the money isn't redistributed to taxing districts, or there's the $1.7 million per year that will go into the projects. As far as when the bonds are paid off, you can see that between 2032 in the first three scenarios, 2018 in the last scenario. And that's what Sue talked about, 20-year bonds versus the nine-year bonds. And I guess she could go into infinite detail on the financial structures of that if that's important to talk about that. With respect to the reallocation of existing general fund services, in order to fund the program through the existing resources, $450,000 of current general fund every year would need to be found. In the other three options, they would not be because they're all paid for with the urban renewal or through a bond or a levy. Local schools impact. We distributed amounts to local schools of $1.1 million. That's what Sue mentioned. We're still trying to understand the impact of Measure 5, but also whether that $1.1 stays in the district or is just as offset to their already existing dollars coming from the state as a result of the equalization formula. The ongoing funds that are redistributed to the local schools, $31,000 per year in those first three. It's $20,000 for 4J, $1,000 for ESD, and $10,000 for Lane County. And then the anticipated year that the district would stop collecting tax increment in the first three because the district would go away, 2011. It wouldn't go away immediately because the projects would have to finish out that are currently in there, like the BEAM project and all. Downtown urban renewal, we'd anticipate it in 2018, 2019. So our recommendation is to initiate the process on the downtown urban renewal, as we've talked about. We believe it's very responsive to the community desires, what they've talked to us and told us it's important. It does provide jobs, helps to revitalize the downtown. We can immediately implement these improvements this summer, and would have the availability to do that. And continued continuation of the downtown loan program to continue to help with other job creation and economic development activities. Here, remember what we're recommending is a very focused four projects. District would terminate after that, setting up this review committee. We're open for questions.
So I just want to say before we begin the discussion, my intention is to do one round of discussion and then have council president with the motion on the table. And we're going to try to get it done by seven because we have the briefing from the police auditor at seven. So that's kind of the goal we're aiming at. And so for the first round, I have Mike, George, George, Betty. Okay. All right, Mike.
Thank you very much, Mayor. So John, from my perspective, any of these options are borrowing money to try and accomplish these goals downtown. They have that in common. The question for me is, what are the impacts to the city, to other jurisdictions, of us borrowing money in different forms in order to be able to do that? You're recommending the tax increment financing option. Betty has, I believe, a motion here to put forward the existing funds, option one. So from your perspective, you've put the other one forward. You've given us a lot of good information for making that decision, but you've decided one's better than the other. And I'd like to hear more from you about why you think that that's a better option, what you think are the, you know, from a larger perspective. What are the downsides to doing it with existing resources and upsides to doing it with tax increment financing? And then lastly with that, if we were to do it with the existing financing model, would there be opportunity costs in the future for having done it that way? So just, I mean, I want to hear your comparative thoughts on these options.
I would be happy to. First of all, my understanding with Councilor Taylor's motion is it's to fund the LCC project only, not the other project. So that's where I think that is different than the existing resources option that you see up here.
Okay.
So I think there is a difference. Yeah, I guess a couple of things with respect to the downtown urban renewal versus some of the others. One, I think the total cost is less. I think that's a positive, particularly when we're in economic difficult times. The less we're able to spend to accomplish the same thing is a positive. So I see that as a positive. One, it does not ask the voters to impose or increase their current taxes. And again, particularly in the economic times we find ourselves, I also think that's a positive message that says we're going to move forward on some very important things for our economy in downtown without going back to the voters and asking you for more money to do that. So I see both of those very positive. On the, on the other side of that, there is an opportunity cost that says if we continue with the district, the money that is in the district is now not able, be able to use for something else. The way this is presented, if the assumption is that we want those, all four of those projects to move forward, and we don't want to use urban renewal, all of those dollars that are freed up actually move into to fund these same projects. So they aren't now available to fund something outside of the project mix or the portfolio, assuming you want to continue to go on with a portfolio. So I don't know, you, in my mind, you're not gaining anything from that. There are some dollars that would then get redistributed to other taxing districts, which they may want or like to have. Any dollar is important to them, but it's a relatively small number. So when you take a look at 4J, it's $20,000 per year, actually could be less. And part of what Sue was talking about was the compaction issue. Depending on how that turns out, it could be, $20,000 would be the best-case scenario if the urban renewal district goes away. It could be anything less, from $20,000 down to zero, actually into a negative number to their, actually, it's to their detriment. And we just don't know that because that's a Measure 5 compaction issue around that. So it's a relatively small amount that would be passed on to the school districts.
Are there opportunity costs from ending the urban renewal district early?
I think only if the council chooses not to move forward with the four projects. If the council ended the district and said, "We do not want to do any or all of those projects," there are some one-time, potentially one-time and potentially ongoing, that frees up to spend on something else. But what we have said is we want to go forward all four projects. Does that make sense?
It does.
Okay. So I think that would be the opportunity cost.
Okay, then lastly, if, forgive me, I'm sure this is probably a silly question, but when, when proposing to expand the boundary to include the VA, do we rely on the approval of any other jurisdiction for that?
No. And what we would, what we would want to do is that if the VA chooses that as their site, and if they are wanting sort of the financial assistance, then we would then expand the boundary and actually spend dollars to do that, up to $2.5 million. If they don't choose that as a location, then that project would remove itself from the plan.
Okay. Thank you. That's my questions for now.
George Pauling?
Well, that was one of the questions I had about is taking VA clinic at this point. Is it a must to include this? Basically, what we're doing is say, yes, let's go ahead and include it at this time only if they award the project to that site. Is that correct?
That's the intent legally. I'm not sure what the legal words are for that, but that's what the intent is.
Okay. And then, you know, there's talk, you were mentioning about discontinuing the downtown revitalization loan program. How effective has that been? And how, ballpark figure, how many people have taken advantage of it? What, give us an idea of what some of those projects may have been.
Michael, if you could not be using one of these mics up here because you know nothing else is working.
Oh, we don't have a hand?
No.
Yeah, we can just bring it in. All right. I'll give you an example of a couple of projects. The, the Broadway building, which houses Adam's Restaurant, Adam's Restaurant itself, the building across the street, which is Kaz Ovacy's building, one east Broadway, thinking in the past now. The Rubenstein's furniture store, when it was redeveloped for an office building. Just give you a few examples.
Harlequin?
Harlequin beads, which may have been that fund or a BDF. Full City Coffee, when they went into their space. Xenon Restaurant, when they went through their ownership change.
So there's quite a list.
Yeah, quite a few.
And without mentioning any names, if you don't want to, are there people in line for that or have put in applications for it or?
Actually talking to the would-be developer of the Taco Time building right now.
Okay. All right. Thank you. And then on this slide eight, if we could go back to slide eight real quick.
So you do it, John.
Amanda's going to magically make it happen.
There you go. Somebody who knows how to do it.
I just wanted to get some clarification on that. If you could get that. I just wanted to get some clarification on that, get that slide. About halfway down the slide, that's third way where it says total schools and $650,000 were lying through it, net benefit $31,000. Did I hear right that the remainder of that $650,000 goes statewide?
Yes.
It would.
So all that, all that the local schools are gaining out of that would be a grand total of $31,000. Is that one time or annual or?
Tens, T C.
These are the ongoing funds.
Yeah, this is the ongoing. And that's correct. Tens to LCC, of course, we are recommending to benefit from the district, so.
Okay. Thank you. And then the last question on, you had listed that a, the spending, there it is, the annual review of the spending would be done by citizens. Who are these citizens? How would they get their, who do they report to?
We'd envision it the same as being done for the streets bond, which you'll be receiving your work session on that when you come back from break. And so what that would be is a group that would, I will appoint, they would then review the financials, make sure we spent it the way we said we would spend it. They would issue a report back to me, which then I would give to the council as an audit and an oversight of that.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, George Brown?
Thank you. Well, actually, I think it's a really bad way to go, leaving the urban renewal thing going. I think it's destructive to Lane County. It hurts the county. You can see that it does hurt the schools. We've heard for years that, oh, it doesn't hurt the schools, the state makes everything up. That's simply not true. I know the county's not thrilled with losing that money every year. The thing is, you know, we can accomplish all of these projects using the existing resources and a revenue backed bond, which does not have to go to voters. We won't have to wait till next fall, which we will if we pursue the urban renewal thing. I know that some of you don't think we can get the signatures, the opponents, to put it to ballot, but, and you've decided to be probably undemocratic and force us to go collect signatures, but we can do that. I think that if we did a revenue backed bond, we don't have to refer that to voters. We could use the $810,000 a year that we would get from the tax increments that's withheld from the general fund. That goes to the general fund. That will raise the $7 million bond. Okay, that, we're almost there now. That could go to LCC. Thing is, we don't even know what LCC is going to require. We won't know that for two more months. They may not need anything. They might not need $8 million. They may need nothing. They may be, they're still pursuing several revenue streams. So we're short there. Now, for the other projects, there's, the city will, if we let the urban renewal go away, the city gets 2.4 million. If we decide to liquidate the loan fund, I'm not so sure I'd recommend that at this point, but that's 1.9. And if we took half a million from facility reserve, that's 4.8. That's the outstanding debt on the parking garage that we want to buy with urban renewal funds to hire the police officers. So we take care of that. Those are the two biggest things right there. The half a million for the parks, that could come from facility reserve. There's no reason to withhold. I know that the majority of council has decided not to use facility reserve, but I don't understand that. Because we've agreed, the majority agreed to spend up to $16 million to move 50 police officers from this building to Country Club Road, they're first responders. Why couldn't we use some of that on the vets clinic, the remainder? Talk about the ultimate first responders are vets, right? Why would we withhold, spend it on our local police but not on our vets? I don't, I don't get that. My point is, we've got plenty of money right here. We've got plenty of money. We don't need to get in a big animosity, a big fight, electoral fight, and divide the community again like what happened last time. I'll need another round.
Betty?
Thank you. I don't think we're going to have time to finish with this tonight, but first, when you talk about urban renewal, it sounds like money's just falling from the skies. I was thinking, who wouldn't want that? It's cheaper than anything you say and doesn't hurt anybody. I don't think that's true, that it doesn't hurt anyone. As far as the schools, if it isn't, according to the assessor, over $2 million goes to the 4J immediately. But don't we care about the schools in the whole state instead of just our schools? And don't we care about the county? And about even Lane Community College gets part of this money if we stop the urban renewal diversion of funds. You talk about the VA clinic. We don't have a clinic. And you talk as if it has been done and as if they're there right now. But I think we should do one thing at a time, and the urgent thing is LCC, which that's what everybody wants. LCC needs an answer. And if they do need money, I think we should help them. I think we should do something that doesn't leave them wondering until next November because if we keep, if we do this, take this step you're talking about, then I think, I believe that there will be a referendum, there will be an election. That leaves us all wondering what's going to happen for months. And we can't, it is possible with existing funds, and I intend to make that motion when I get a chance, to fund whatever LCC needs without continuing urban renewal, without raising taxes, without having a GO bond. And I think that's, that's what we should do. We should take action to achieve what we want to achieve and what the community, what many people in the community want to achieve. Instead of going through, having people spend all the time and the money, which will happen, to have a special election and then probably vote it down. At least it will leave LCC unable to start, to continue with their plans immediately. When you talk about taking a first step, I think if we don't know, we shouldn't take a first step till we know where we're going and till we know what, and we don't have to do all those things at once, especially a clinic that isn't, we don't know where a clinic is going to go. But I think the thing that is urgent is LCC and filling that pit. And we should do something that is sure and can take effect right away. Thank you.
Jennifer?
Sue, what, when is the VA project expected to be awarded?
Let me ask Mike.
We don't really have that information at this point. We know that they're doing site visits over the next couple of weeks. We know that they're going to do some additional diligence. My understanding is that they hope to make a decision on that towards the end of this year, but it's a federal project and we don't, we don't have a firm handle on the timeline. I don't think they do either. But we know that they're pursuing it actively. We know that they're, they have been out for requests, proposals. They've received several responses to that, including the site which we're approaching, which is what they're referring to as the Woolamette site, the old clinic site.
And then Sue, also on this chart right here, under, I'm sorry, I can't, where it says requires reallocation of existing general fund services.
Mm-hmm.
Yes. Is that the $450,000?
Yes.
That you mentioned earlier? Okay. All right. Thank you.
Chris?
Oh, thank you. The, a lot of these have already been asked, so I'm just going to kind of double check. When you talked about the $450,000, that's on top of the cuts that you're already having to program. That's not included. That would be an additional $450,000 in cuts.
Correct.
That would have to be permanent cuts.
Yes.
Correct.
So we're already having to cut $9 million, between $9 and $12 million. And this would be another $450,000 worth of cuts we'd have to make on top of that. Okay? And then the question was also asked, how actively is the loan program used? And I appreciate the answer. That was more than I actually had thought it might be. And to me, I guess the debate really comes down to the two options that don't represent having to go out for something that's going to increase taxes. I mean, that's probably pretty clear, we're not going to give away money in order to go out and get a bond that's going to increase money. So we're really looking at the existing resource versus the urban renewal one. If we go with the existing resource one and do all the reallocations and everything else, that's going to obligate us till 2032. Even if it's a revenue bond or whatever bond, we're obligated to repay that in some form until 2032. Whereas if we stay with the urban renewal, that ends in 2019. So nobody's advocating keeping the urban renewal district past 2019. We would just continue to use that mechanism to get this work done and then end it. So nobody here is saying we want to keep the urban renewal district going?
My recommendation is that it terminates at that point.
Okay. So we just use it long enough to do this work and then we get rid of it. We end it. We give it a raster, a breather or whatever. Also, this option being 21.7 million versus 24.7 in interest paid, it's actually $3 million less in interest we're paying than the existing resource if we go with some sort of an internal bond. So that's $3 million we could be using for something that we would be paying for interest over this extended period of time.
Correct.
Up to 2032. And yeah, I'm interested in knowing about the redistribution because I know schools have been talked about a lot as being hurt. And I really am interested in knowing because I, my understanding was that they wouldn't, but I'd love the definitive answer. I think that would be, that would be great. So for me, I think keeping the urban renewal district long enough to let it do that job is probably, on balance, the most prudent way to go because we can get out from underneath it faster. It's going to cost us less in interest. It's not going to have an impact on voters. It will allow the loan program to continue and it will basically not have to hurt with more cuts within the city when we're already having to make a lot of cuts. Did I get anything wrong?
No.
As far as you can tell?
Alan?
First of all, this is excellent work. It's very clear. It was a great comparison of the different options and just what I asked for when I wanted to see this kind of analysis. I think it's important for us, this is very complex, and this type of in-depth analysis is what we deserve to see. And I thought it was a fantastic idea to actually do a, go to a tax assessment, a tax bill for the average homeowner, which is $158,000 of assessed value. Seems a little low, but, and then your impact would be up or down depending on what your assessed value. So you can actually tell what's going on with each of these. So I support all, all of the projects. I support the LCC. I support the VA, if we can get it downtown, and the farmer's market, and the increased police for downtown and property crime. I think those, those things are catalysts for making our downtown a better place and more vibrant. At least it's a good start. I don't think there's any one thing or any four things in this case that will accomplish that. It's something that over time will, with many actions, will actually get there. So then the issue for me becomes, if those are meritorious projects, how do we pay for it? And which option makes the most sense and what are the impacts and what are the costs? When I look at the existing resource scenario, that one had immediate appeal at the beginning to look at it, but it had this thing in there called reprogramming of general fund services, which is code for cutting programs in the general fund. That's what reprogramming means, on the library, parks and rec, and central services. The other two things in there are fire and police, and that's counterintuitive to what we're trying to accomplish here. So really, it's cuts. In the end, we would also eliminate the urban renewal district and we'd save the average homeowner of that home $158,000, $1.66 per year. And so on average, I was thinking about that today when I was at lunch, and I bought this soda, this juice, and it was $1.59. And this and another seven cents is what you would get if we eliminated the urban renewal district. I thought about that for a little bit and went, well, that's not all that much. In fact, why are we arguing over a soda? And so that particular option didn't hold a lot of value for me. And then I guess I'll need another round.
Okay, Andrea?
Thank you, Mayor. I wasn't going to speak because everybody has said their piece, but, and I agree with things on both sides of the table. As far as looking at this stuff, I think it's good work. Thank you for going through this process. I know this is probably, I can hear your breath is like overwhelming to try and figure all these things out, but I just wanted, I'll just make a couple of comments. If LCC doesn't need $8 million, we won't give them $8 million. If they come to us and say we need $4 million.
We'll be happy.
We'll be happy. The other thing is that I think the VA needs to be here. And I think if the VA even gives a look over their shoulder at us, we need to be prepared to say, what can we do to help you be here? When I think about our homeless population and the amount of people that are vets, and I see them repetitively on the streets, on the street corners and in the ER, and I know that they're not getting what they need, I don't know that that will be the catalyst for them to maybe have a better life, but I sure wouldn't want to be the one to stand in the way of encouraging them to access what, what to do them.
Before we put the motion on the table, just a couple of comments that I wanted to make. I don't think there is a perfect funding mechanism. I suppose the most perfect thing would be that it didn't cost us anything, but the project that's in front of us is about as close to ideal as we can get. LCC, education, our kids, green jobs, economic development, short and long-term employment, you just can't get a better package than that out in front of people. And I would make the case in terms of this particular project, that not only are we benefiting LCC, but we're benefiting K through 12 because we are putting a place out in front of our kids that they can go to and get an education and job training and prepare for their future. So I think it's a win-win on every level. And I would also say that just this week, I got an email asking for a meeting to talk about what we're doing as a community plan for our veterans coming back into the community. And they expect it to be quite a big hall here. So we have before us an opportunity to try to do, get something in place. And I think supporting this sends us very strong message about what we're willing to support and want to have in our community. So I think for all of those reasons, this seems like not perfect, but just about as good as you can get. Mike, will you put it on the table, please?
Yeah, I will, but I'd like to speak to the motion if I get a second, please. I moved forward to the planning commission and overlapping taxing districts. Proposed amendments to the downtown urban renewal plan, consistent with the draft plan and reports included in attachments K and L.
Second for discussion, and I want to make a substitute motion as soon as I get a chance.
Mike?
Yeah, first I would say that I have mentioned on several occasions that I'm not a fan of tax increment financing here. Now, as a tool, I think it's a perfectly legitimate tool, but my understanding of the value of tax increment financing is that, much like a MUCD or some other types of opportunities, what it does is, or what it is supposed to do, the thinking behind it is that it makes the property values increase by borrowing against that future value in order to make that occur. And I'm okay with the idea of being creative with financing in order to find ways to increase the value, the real property value of, for example, in this case, our downtown. My challenge is that we have used this tool for private developments downtown, but by and large, we use it for public ones, and that doesn't increase the property value. And so we are harming other jurisdictions at times to, in this case, in very small ways, in order to not increase the property value, and that's what the tool is supposed to be for in the first place. So that's why I've not been a fan of doing this. But I don't want to let that ideological sort of opinion be in the way of the pragmatic approach to the best way to make our downtown more vibrant. And that's what I see this as. I can entirely appreciate the intelligence of trying to do that job with existing resources. But I think the comparative costs of doing that, in this case, are too high. So I'm entirely in favor of us moving forward with this option because the end of the day value is we get a vibrant LCC campus downtown. We have the potential to have the vets hospital downtown. We get a very big step forward in increased public safety downtown and an increase to a popular thing and a, and a help to a popular thing in the market area downtown. And so, as I said, I think the pragmatic approach to trying to increase those important goals is more important than the ideological fight about whether or not this is a good tool. So I'm willing- So, I'm willing to support it.
Betty?
Well, I sort of think I know how this is going. I'm wondering if we'll be watching a council in the future years, provided this stands, say, let's increase it for just, let's keep urban renewal for five more years or 10 more years. This is at least the third time it's been extended. It was, it was never intended to go on forever. As for the county, I know that the county needs money desperately. We're all citizens of the county. So, we're taking, and when you say it doesn't cost anything, if we are paying for services, we may pay them in another way, but we'll still be paying. As for the vets' hospital, that's between the federal government and, in this case, Peace Health, not between us. I do agree we should take care of this thing that everyone says they want, helping LCC. And I do, I want to make a substitute motion, which has been, which has been changed slightly, but been changed, and I agree with the way we finally have it. I move that the city manager prepare and return to the council with a plan to support LCC's 10th and Charmelton project in the amount of 8.2 million, 8 million plus 200,000 bond issuance and transaction costs, using the 2.4 million that would be available after terminating tax increment financing, the 1.9 million balance of the downtown loan fund, and a 3.9 million bond paid for, paid from the additional $810,000 in property tax dollars that will come to the city's general fund if tax increment ceases. In addition, the manager shall consider other sources of funds and lieu of part of the 3.9 million bond.
Second.
Thanks. And I, thanks. And then, if there's another way to do it, other funds, that's fine. If you find other ways besides the loan fund, it would be good to keep the loan fund, but we can pay for this and not have anybody left in suspense as to whether we're going to fill the pit and have LCC be able to go downtown. Thank you.
City manager, did you have a chance to look at this proposal and give us your thoughts and compare some of the other things on the table?
Like I said, what I understand this to be is strictly for LCC only, not the other projects.
All right. Other comments? I don't, I think you're ready to vote on the...
George has.
I've got a comment. Well, I, you know, scenario number one, staff scenario number one, isn't the only scenario number one. I just offered one a few minutes ago that involves no reprogramming whatsoever of general funds.
This doesn't have any...
And this doesn't either. There's, what Betty and I are saying is there are viable ways to do this without keeping the urban renewal district going. And we've already been over the fact that, yes, we say that it's going to end this time. Just use it one more time, that's all, just one more time. Well, that's what people said four times already, or five. I might even share. It's four times. We've been over this. Future council, future staff, future managers can just wipe this out in half an hour, and it means nothing to say that this will be the last time. I personally don't believe it myself, but... And Councilor Clark, there is a commonality, we were looking at commonalities on the PowerPoint demonstration, and these four projects have one thing in common. Not a single one generates a penny in new property tax revenue for the city. They're all worthy projects. I'm not saying that, but that was one of the goals of urban renewal, was to increase property values and increase revenues for all the taxing jurisdictions to give up that tax for all those years. And we've got four projects going here that are worthy, but they will, they were not going to do that. And I just think it's time to let it go. I've got a minute. I'd just like to correct something. On page 12, there's a reference to the, of our packet, there's a reference to the Strategy Research Institute phone survey where, you know, 53% of the respondents said, wow, this is great, go for it. If you really, that's true. A question was raised that way, but the final question, post-argument support for downtown revitalization plan, and they covered all these things in the phone survey. Now that you've heard all the arguments, to increase the spending cap in order to make it possible for downtown revitalization, would you vote yes or no? Would that be definitely yes, probably yes, probably no, definitely no? Definitely yes, 27%. Probably yes, 23%. But Mr. Manras told us that you only take half of that figure because half those people are going to vote no. So, really, that's only 39% yes, 61% no. Two and a quarter years ago, when we voted on the urban renewal plan amendment last time, it was 63 to 37. This is almost the same, and we paid $25,000 for this, for this survey, and they do good work, and it's like they're predicting the same outcome. I don't understand why we're headed on this path to do the same thing that we did two and a half years ago. Thanks.
Okay, I think we're ready to vote on Betty's motion. All those in favor, please indicate. Two, in opposition. Six, it fails. We're back to the main motion. Alan?
So, finishing off where I left off, so if the existing resources scenario saves us a soda or juice a year, but the other impacts it has are the cuts of reprogramming, ongoing permanent cuts of general fund services like the library, parks and recs, on top of the 9 million we're already doing, and we lose the revitalization program. So, that option doesn't, I don't really like that option. I don't like the geo-bond or the levy because we're really asking people to raise taxes in an economically hard time to pay for these projects. Granted, it's only $7.34, or about, you know, five sodas per household, but I'm not, I don't want to go out and ask people to do that. So, that leaves the urban renewal district, and what that gets us is no net increase in taxes. We maintain the status quo. Your tax bill won't change a dime. There's no cuts to the general fund. We keep the revitalization downtown loan fund, and it's the cheapest option. It was the cheapest option by $3 million to get all of these projects done. We can debate whether or not we want to do all the projects, but I think we've already done that and we're on board with these, at least the majority is. So, on top of all of this, the very, very modest impacts to 4J. At best, it's a $20,000 hit, and so if this passes, I'm going to ask the city manager to come back and with some creative ideas and ways to keep 4J whole in this whole thing, either through services that we can exchange or...
Baffal.
Baffal's not impacted at all, zero. It's only 4J that's impacted by this. So, Baffal has no impact on the downtown urban renewal district. So, it's just 4J, but nice try!
We could keep them whole, too, but that's easy.
No, it isn't.
So, either through services or exchange of services or money, so we can take that issue off the table. And so, I also like the city manager's ideas of the system reviews to ensure that we're spending the money on what we said we're going to spend it on and that we terminate this when we're done. So, I don't like the motion that just passed because it only focused it on LCC and not the other projects. That doesn't work for me, so, which is why I voted against it. So, and I don't like using existing facilities reverse because it's very clear to me that we need to get out of this building. And the first step of that was getting the police out of this building. The second step is getting every other functions out of this building, and that's the remaining part that we haven't worked on. We have $6 million left to be able to do that. And then, the third part is what do we do with this property? So, finally, I guess you get, I get it that some people don't like urban renewal and tax increment financing. Some people hate it, but let's put it in context. What you're talking about is a soda per year, per household, on average, and it doesn't raise anybody's taxes if we do it, and it really doesn't hurt 4J, which is why I support the urban renewal district option.
So, there really is a Santa Claus, huh?
I didn't know that.
Sure. That's free.
I mean, that's wonderful. Let's just ask for everything else we want that's free. I wonder if you're aware that a Tuolotin school district is trying, is maybe rejecting their urban renewal. I understand this, it's true. School districts, county doesn't have the power to do that. They would, might like to, but they don't have the power.
I believe the Tuolotin actually voted to support it. The school district voted to support it.
Did they do that now?
Yes.
Too bad. Thank you.
Mike?
Yeah, I sense that there are enough votes at the table to pass this, and as I mentioned earlier, I'm not a big fan of the tool, but I think it's the most intelligent, pragmatic approach to accomplishing the goals that the community wants. Now, here's the thing, we're all at the table doing the work. We've all read this stuff, and that's how representative government works. Everybody wants their representatives. You hear this all the time when you read it, that they want them to go and do the work and make the decision. So, it sounds like we're going to make a decision. And then, it's up to the general public. And if petitions come out, and they may, then the general public has to decide. And at that moment, be clear, the decision is, do you want LCC downtown? Do you want increased public safety downtown? And do you want a VA clinic downtown? And do you want a better market district downtown? Or do you not? Because putting on the ballot and voting it down, as we've done before, is simply killing the opportunity to make downtown more vibrant. So, I guess I'll ask, if this body decides that that's the way we should move forward, I hope the community trusts us on this one.
George?
Well, I don't know. That's kind of heated rhetoric there. You can vote against something, but still be for having LCC. You can vote against a tool, but still be in favor of the projects, and that's where, certainly where Betty and I are. We want to see all these things happen. It's just, we think this is a terrible, the option that the majority has chosen is a terrible option, and I have a feeling that the taxpayers just might agree with this. And I'd really be disappointed if the majority of council, once this thing comes back in the form, I know of an ordinance, if the council, if we, didn't refer it to the voters. Because that's the democratic thing to do, is let the taxpayers decide how they want their funds spent, how they want their taxes spent. That's what all this is. And, I mean, I have a feeling majority of council will make the opponents go out and collect signatures, and that's fine, too, but it's just that's not a very democratic way. That's like saying you don't trust the voters. You don't trust your constituents. And if you've got a good case, you should feel comfortable going in front of people in public and having debates and arguing your case, make your case for your project. But that's called democracy. That's the great thing. You make your case before the voters. So, but I, I object to this thing being framed as opposing urban renewal, therefore you oppose downtown development and science and art and education and our vets and everything. I mean, that's absurd. Of course, we support all those projects. This is just not the right way to go about it. So, I really hate to see it framed that way. Thank you.
Differences of opinion are what makes us part of government here. What I would, I appreciate what Alan brought up about the rest of the folks here in City Hall, and we just experienced two rather loud events in the world with Haiti and Chile, and it becomes very apparent to us how close that could be to happening in the Northwest as well. So, I take that very seriously in terms of the safety and well-being of people in our community. In this particular case, I just want to say, I think you have an opportunity, no matter how you feel about urban renewal, to have a win-win because you have a chance to get these four things done and close down the urban renewal district. So, you get a chance to call it good for everybody. So, I'm hoping we'll get it together and come out of this and feel like you're getting a great project downtown and you can end the life of this particular urban renewal district. I think we're ready to vote on this. All those in favor, please indicate. Six in favor and opposition, two, it passes. Thank you all. Yes, Alan?
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to request the city manager to complete the analysis on the financial impact on 4J and should there be a financial impact, that they come back to us with ways to keep 4J whole, either through exchange of services or through financial...
Change of services. Is there a second?
A second, yeah.
Moved and seconded. Okay, yes.
I just want to caution folks, I mean, I'm more than willing to send city manager to do that work, but I know that Baffal had a history of where we were given money, then we had to give it back, and because you only get so much per student. So, I am appreciative of the service, of the service piece because I think that, you know...
Yeah, that's a good point. The impact could be...
Yes, Mike?
I also heard a discussion take place that county commissioners might ask us to do a similar thing with the county funds that are affected. So, I guess I would caution that we're going to end up eliminating our own proposed savings of the $450,000 if we go too far down this road, so...
You want to say it, Andy?
Well, you know, if that is the case, then let them ask us for what they think it's worth, and we can also maybe show what we put into county services that are not really our responsibility by designation, but because we are human beings and we care about the rest of the community, we extend ourselves significantly in the realm of the Human Services Commission and extra money that we give them. So, I'll be glad to hear from the county commissioners the amount of money that they are being impacted, and then I, not that I would ever say tit-for-tat, but you know...
Jennifer?
This isn't to the motion. Can I just ask a question of John? I'm still kind of unclear about the VA. It sounds like...
Can, we probably ought to vote on Alan's motion. This is not the same, right? You're not talking about Alan's motion.
That is correct. That's why, yeah. You want me to wait?
I'll come back. All right. So, all those in favor of Alan's motion? One, two, three, four, five, six. In opposition, two, it passes. All right, now we're back to you.
Thank you. Well, it sounds like if we continue down this path, we will go toward a plan amendment, and when would that be completed? In May?
We'd be coming back to you at the end of May, yes.
Okay, but the RFPs won't be awarded until potentially the end of the year. So, is, when we amend the plan, it sounds like we're sort of going for a certain dollar amount, and, but if it turns out that we don't get the RFP and we padded that budget to include the RFP, I don't want that money to then be sucked up by LCC or the farmers' market or anything like that. I just...
Absolutely. That's our intent, and legally, we can kind of get back on how the actual legal language would be, but our intent would be exactly the same thing, that if VA chooses not to move down there and would not need any dollars, then those dollars would not be spent on anything else. That's our intent.
So, the time would be adjusted or the amount?
Yeah, we can...
If you look at the draft plan amendment, what it says is that the agency can spend
up to 8 million for LCC, that it can spend up to half a million for farmers' market, that it can spend up to, I think it's 4.9 million on parking. So, even if the VA doesn't go forward, the agency couldn't spend that 2.5 million in any other way. The plan doesn't allow it. It limits the amount. You have four projects. It limits the amount per project.
So, conceivably, could that accelerate the termination of the, if the VA doesn't choose to go down here, could it accelerate the termination of the district?
Yes, it would.
All right, George?
Do you have something in place as far as extending the boundary also?
We're working with bond council because ultimately, bond council has to give an opinion on when we issue bonds. We're working with bond council to figure out exactly how to do that. The one way we know we can do it is that the, if the VA says they don't, they're not going to choose this site, that in essence, we can relinquish that new territory. So, if the territory goes in, they say, VA says, we're going elsewhere. We can give up that territory. We're looking for a way to actually try to make the plan amendment, the expansion contingent, but bond council is the one that has to say, we're okay with that.
And when this whole discussion first started, doubts, the one thing that I think I made pretty clear to John was that I do not want to extend the boundary unless it's for a specific project, and the VA hospital was the specific project that I was talking about. Thank you.
All right. Well, next chapter of this story is on Wednesday, right? Yes?
Yes.
You look lively, Alan.
Come in, over.
All right. Next up is our police auditor. Next up is our police auditors, going to make a report today.
Thank you. Every time you all say, things will run over, I end up with about 35 extra minutes at a time.
Don't feel like you have to take it up.
I'm not going to. I'm not going to. However much you need.
You also know, Pat, please clear a room.
Yeah.
That's good.
That's a good thing, I think. I meet, I meet bi-weekly with the council president and vice president, and I get feedback from council members. And one of the things I get feedback from is at least just a very brief description, if you will, of what the CRB will talk about at its next meeting tomorrow night. So that's what I'm here to, to do today. Uh, there's, the, I'll just touch on the main points and hopefully be able to once again clear the room. There's, the Policies and Procedures Subcommittee is close to having their final product done. When we came here, there was really no policies and procedures or bylaws for the CRB. And so, thanks in, in large part to Mr. Lowey and his hard work, we want to have policies and bylaws, much like the police commission does. Not the same ones, of course, but I mean, in terms of substance. A second issue that we think is, might generate some attention is, there's going to be a continued discussion of what's public records with regard to the CRB. Several years ago, there was some legal advice given about the Oregon Public Records law that has caused some confusion, because there wasn't a differentiation between public employees and public safety employees in those decisions. So we're looking to, um, find some common ground there. Police auditing 101 from Sam Walker from University of Nebraska Omaha, how police officers can improve policing through effective oversight, number, item number one is transparency. So we're trying, we're, we're trying to find some common ground to maximize the volume of info that we can provide to the public. We don't intend to point fingers at individual employees, but we want to get as much information as possible out to the public. And I don't think that we've found that common ground, so we're working through that with the law director, and, and I think that as we go through this, we wind up with a process. The other item that is probably of interest, which you received, I emails, I think, this past weekend, from Glenn Klein, was the chief's response to the review board wishing to reopen a closed case, and, um, on the, on one of the TASER cases. So you should have all gotten emails from Glenn Klein about the collective bargaining restrictions to do that. And then finally, the case review, which is not a TASER case, a little something different, just involves, uh, an incident in which someone was being arrested and another citizen was troubled by how that was going, so she became involved and, and ended up leading to her arrest. And then, um, a secondary issue, which we hope that one of our review board members, Bernadette Conover, who's on the police commission, will take the police commission as a secondary offshoot of that. We had a situation which the original person who was arrested decided to, while in the police cruiser, decided to, I'm trying to look at the right, the right terminology, attempt to injure himself while he was in the police cruiser. And right now, there's really not a policy about how the officers are supposed to respond to that, and so that's an issue that we hope will be referred to the police commission for discussion and policy. So that's the, I think, going to be the primary topics of discussion. Just wanted to give you a brief overview of that.
Thanks for that, Mike. Thank you very much. Any questions? Anybody have any questions? Yes, Mike?
I'm not sure that right now during this time is the best place to have a detailed discussion of the transparency issue and the public records laws in Oregon, but I would very much appreciate from Glenn, um, some manner of, of explanation for current practice, based on what, how, how did we get to this place where we have a fairly typical response to how we deal with public records requests when it involves employee discussions? I'd like to know your thinking a little better, because I, I have a sense that perhaps at some point in the future, the council may have to weigh, or may want to weigh in on that. And so I'd like a little more homework if I, if I could. Thanks.
All right. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you. You're welcome. Thank you.
All right. Anything else for the good of the order today? We're, we're 45 minutes to-
That's right.
That's okay. All right. Thank you all.
How's that going?
You can say it to me, it's okay.